Study results presented by Evergreen Solutions.
Yes, sir. You know, my doubt is kind of introduce Rob. The, as you know, that you requested that we do a classification compensation study for the city and had one that I can never remember that we've done one. And, you know, we've had, we've done a few market studies ourselves in a few different positions, but it was time to do a full thorough review. And so Mr. Rob Williamson from Evergreen Solutions is here to present the findings and their results that they have for their classification compensation study. So I'll turn it over to Rob.
Good evening, Mayor Holden. How are you? Good. So it's not always that we have like a unique meeting or a meeting that is just specific for the compensation results. So this is unique, but I love it, you know, because now we can stay focused on what we're going to look at today. And good on you for recommending this. I told a few of you before the meeting, I'm blessed to have the opportunity to work with cities and counties and utilities all across the nation. And so I get to work with teams all over. And your team is a good one, okay? It has been a wonderful experience. They have challenged our results or recommendations at every step along the way. They've asked good questions. And it started when I came here in this room and we had our in-person outreach. And we were, I was facing this direction and we were talking to your staff about the study and about the process. And ultimately that we were going to arrive at this meeting where we were going to be presenting you with the study findings and maybe some recommendations. And this is the exciting part for us because we feel like the recommendations that we're going to bring to you are going to be transformative in nature, specifically as it relates to your competitiveness in the marketplace. I really think that what is recommended if you choose to implement it will take you from a position where quite frankly, you're not competitive in the marketplace to having you be a place where you can recruit and retain talent however you desire to do so. It will immediately place you in a market competitive position. So look, we do this all the time. You know, we'll do compensation studies all the time. So stop me at any point in the presentation, ask questions. If there's anything that you're unclear about or you want to pause and spend a little bit more time on, absolutely, let's do that. Typically it takes about 10 or 15 minutes to go through the slides and then we get to the one that everybody's waiting for, which is how much is this going to cost, right? So the study process, you know, basically we could net it out till we did some core things for you. We surveyed the employees, we surveyed the market, we put that together, and now we're at the reporting audit phase. And that reporting audit phase takes two steps. One, we report on the policymakers, we report to the policymakers. And then after that, we're going to write a draft report that will memorialize everything we've done for you and the study findings. So the compensation philosophy is something that we'll start with. This is the things that we've gone through to this point. We had a kickoff call of your leadership team. We came here and did in-person outreach. The internal equity analysis piece, that's the employee survey. Ultimately, we're trying to get you to a fair and competitive pay plan. So the fair part is the internal equity. That is the employee survey piece. The conducted external equity analysis, that's the survey the market piece. Are you competitive? And if not, where are you competitive? And what do we have to do to get you there? Then we look at revising your current pay plan. What's the structure? What do you, what do you use as a way of compensating employees now? How do they progress in their career? And then we took those recommendations, we brought them to your project leadership team, and ultimately we recommended different implementation options and associated costs. So compensation philosophy, we wanted to prioritize being competitive, okay? So that's what we were looking at. Doesn't mean that we threw out your internal equity or how you value positions currently, but we prioritize the market, okay? Because that's what we were told was your primary focus. We wanted to give you a pay, a pay plan that was fair, that was flexible, but also understanding that there's fiscal realities that you deal with as policymakers and that it has to be fiscally responsible. Doesn't do any good to recommend these wild raises, if you will, if you got to come back the next year and lay people off. It's got to be responsible what we recommend. The step plan that you currently have is 30 steps. We're recommending a 20-step plan to bring it more into a market competitive position and that you be moving people within the plan based on experience and based on performance. And hopefully that performance is linked to desired outcomes that you as policymakers are setting for White House. This is something that I wanted to highlight before we moved on any further because we do get the opportunity to do this all over the country. We have a pretty good understanding of what the normal employee participation would be when we have our survey. We made this survey available to all employees and typically we average about 70%. 70% participation rate is usually what we represent. You're about 90. That is extraordinary. That should tell you that this is obviously very important to those individuals that provide the services to the folks that helped put you where you are, lack of better looking than saying it. It was important to them and I think it speaks also to your leadership for directing us to do this study to start with. We know that it's important to you. Supervisor's summary, 100%. Supervisors reviewing to make sure that we had accuracy there and the essential function that employees perform. And then that classification summary piece is important because we want to get to a defensible recommendation. Well, one of the ways we do that is, were we able to capture a survey for every single job that you have here? Well, we were about one short. So that means that we have a very defensible data set from which to work from. Now, if we can combine that with a market data set that equally is defensible, then we feel like we can make strong recommendations. So the compensation outlook, I threw in a couple of slides here for you just to kind of give you a 30,000-foot view of what does compensation look like in the public sector nationally, and then we'll bring it back home. So private sector wage growth, you know, we had everything that happened before January 2020 and everything that's happened since as it relates to labor. Basically, the graph went like this, straight up, and the private sector is throwing money at employees to try to get them to come to work for them, especially in growth markets. Anything related to water, wastewater, planning, engineering, even CDL drivers, you name it, they were looking at throwing money at folks because we had the great resignation, we had the great relocation, we had a dramatic reduction in the amount of employees. So what happens? Well, the public sector lags the private sector, as we know, and so it took a little time to catch up. And so the previous graph showed you that things are starting to level off a little bit as it relates to wage increases. But I wanted to let you know that as it relates to the public sector and wage and benefit growth, even as recently as the last quarterly report from the Department of Labor, wages are still increasing, about four and a half percent. So that's just so you know, whatever you implement today, the market keeps moving. So you may want to consider hardwiring ways to have cost of living adjustments part of your overall compensation structure as you move forward. You don't want to implement something and then, you know, not do anything for four or five years and find yourself behind the market again. The compensation review that we did for you specifically, we had 17 approved market peers, cities and a few neighboring, a few counties that we used to survey in the marketplace. We took all of your benchmark classifications and we observed them to market. We had 12 of 17 peers provide data and we had a very robust eight responses for every one of the benchmark classifications that we observed to market. Not everyone, not every one of the benchmark classifications returned data. We had to have per federal guidelines, we got to have at least five matches to make a recommendation to your team. But bottom line, for those that we didn't get matches for, which was very few, we would use your current internal equity. Then we would also use the employee survey, those JAP scores, to help us slot into the new pay plan. Basically, our whole philosophy is we take your existing job titles, your existing classifications, and we want to move those into new market competitive pay ranges. Then we take the employees that occupy those jobs and we move them into those new market competitive pay ranges. So that's kind of the overall view of how we would do that. We do adjust for cost of living as well. So a couple of things about the review that are important for you to know. This may be a surprise for you, it may not, but the pay ranges that you had, and keep in mind, there's a difference between what the pay ranges are and what you're actually paying people. But your pay ranges were significantly behind the market at the minimum of the range particularly. I think it was around 20%. And I have another slide that I'll show you in a minute that will reflect that. That doesn't mean that everybody's getting a 20% raise, okay? That's not what we're recommending here. But what happens as the result of that is, let's say you have an opening for administrative assistant and the market has a pay range for an administrative assistant of $35,000 to $55,000, and your pay range is 30 to 50. When you go to post that job and you post $30,000 for that job and you get two applicants and neither one of them are qualified, that's one of the reasons why. So what do you do to adjust? Well, you start bringing people in above the minimum. You can't hire them unless you want to pay them a competitive wage. So maybe you hired them at $35,000, that's above your minimum. And what that does is the person that you hired as an administrative assistant five years ago, they're making $35,000. So now we have compression, right? You've got to kind of do what you've got to do to fill the positions and that can develop over time. But that's one of the results that we see of having a salary range that's behind the market. So that's what the talk about there, recruiting folks above the minimum. You have to pay them above the minimum. When we looked at your ranges, we noticed that your ranges were really about 90%. That range is, how far is the minimum of your range, that $30,000, to the maximum of your range, that $50,000, okay? What's the range there? Well, your range is about 90%, but when we look deeper at your plan, you have virtually no employees that are above the midpoint of your range. Nobody gets to the maximum of the range. So really, your effective maximum is much less, okay? You can say that your range is 100%, but if people never get above 40% of the range, then really your range is 40%, right? So when we compare that effective range to the market, what we found is that you're actually behind the market at the minimum, at the midpoint, and at the maximum, at all three. So here are the target peers that we took a look at. The ones that are in bold type are the ones that we received data back from. Those are 12 of the 17 that we received data back from. Some are going to represent the higher end of the market, some might represent a little bit lower end of the market, some like Hendersonville, you might be looking at that and say, wow, the population there is bigger than our 15,000 or whatever it might be. The idea is that first of all, Evergreen didn't pick these targets without approval and consideration from your team and your employees. When we came here for outreach and I was here having focus group sessions, one of the specific questions I asked your team was, who should we be comparing you to? Who are your competitors? Who are the market's peers, if you will? And so we used that, we used our own data as well as information from your project leadership team to come up with this list. Here's the numbers that I was talking about. There's that 19.4% behind at the minimum. At the midpoint, 13.8 or basically 14%, and at the maximum, 10%. So as a leader, why does that matter to you? Here's why. If you're behind the market at the minimum at 19%, as I mentioned earlier, you're going to post positions and your number of qualified applicants you're going to get is going to be very low if you get anyone responding at all. That leads to more vacancies for longer periods of time. So that's going to wear on staff a little bit. And it actually can cause turnover. And so it really costs you more money. Turnover for a hourly employee is usually about 50% of their annual salary is the cost of turnover. When you start getting to the midpoint, which is where I feel you are particularly vulnerable as an organization, that's where turnover gets real expensive. Typically about one and a half times salary to replace a tenured employee, especially when they reach a position of leadership. Being 14% behind market at that midpoint, that's where an employee's got a little bit of tenure. They have the necessary certifications they need to do the job. They've now got the licensure that they need to do their job. They become incredibly valuable, especially in a competitive market, for people to come in and be like, wow, we've got this so-and-so that works over there at White House that, you know, I just saw them at the last conference. They've got about eight or nine years of experience and, you know, White House really isn't paying a competitive wage. Why don't we see if we can go get them? And you start losing those tenured employees, that disrupts your succession planning, on and on, you get it. So we wanted to make sure that we had a robust data set, which we had for the employee piece, survey piece. We had a robust data set for the market salary piece, which we did. And then we put that together to create some recommendations. The findings are no employees are recommended for a decrease as a result of our study. If for some reason, let's say that new admin assistant, that hypothetical admin assistant that we were just mentioning, let's say they were hired at $36,000, well, then they would not be recommended for adjustment. They're paid at a competitive wage. So there would be no adjustment as part of our recommendation. But if you had somebody that was, like in that example, they're making 36, we wouldn't recommend that they have a $1,000 decrease to go back to the 35, okay? I'm going to head there. I mentioned the pay ranges currently are 90%. In fact, it is closer to 60%. The market average is 45%. So basically, your ranges were twice as wide as the market. We're recommending scaling that back to 60% to better meet the market. As I mentioned earlier, only a few of your employees, I think you had 135, some people in there? Yeah, were paid above the midpoint of the range. And we're recommending what's called hybrid parity. And I'm going to talk about that in a moment, but basically it moves employees into those new market competitive pay ranges based on a blend of the amount of time that they've been in their current job title and the amount of time overall that they've had in service to White House. It blends those two together, okay? Collaborative, I mentioned that, you know, this was done in conjunction with your employees, your project leadership team throughout. We have, the current job titles are placed into separate plans. Those separate plans would be general, government, fire, and police. And then it's important to know that the implementation costs that we're going to show you are not a write a check tonight numbers, okay? These are numbers that are implemented throughout a fiscal year. And I think if there was a mid-year recommendation by this board or ultimate approval by this board, then the number that I'm going to show you gets even less. The number we're showing you is for a fiscal year. So if you were implementing this for six months, whatever it might be, obviously that number is going to be less. So recommendations are to adopt the new plan. We're going to create new market competitive pay ranges, as I mentioned. We're going to reassign those job titles into pay grades based on the market results and the employee surveys. Then we're going to recommend hybrid parity as a model, and then we're going to place the employees within the plan. Here's the money slide. The two options that are shown there for you are really one option because the bring-to-minimum cost that you see there of $240 is included in the hybrid parity cost. Because the first thing we've got to do is we've got to get employees moved into the minimum of their new market competitive range. And then after we do that, then we move them to try to eliminate wage compression and to try to bring them into their new ranges based on time in their classification and overall tenure, combination of the two. The results would be, as I said, this is base salary adjusted for cost of living. Next steps for us, and then I can go back to that slide. Next steps for us are we're going to update your job descriptions, make sure that they're legally compliant, and to make sure that the essential functions that employees are performing align with the job description that they have. Job force manager training, that's just a fancy way of describing, we're going to help your staff, train them to maintain your pay plan moving forward. It's a living, breathing document, right? You've got to, now to run, so you're hiring and bringing in new people all the time and need it to evolve. We're going to train them how to maintain your pay plan. And then, as I mentioned at the outset, we're going to create a report that will be available to anyone and everyone that will memorialize the work that we've done and the study findings. And at this point, I know that was a lot, all right? I know that was a lot, but I can go back to any slide that you need me to and obviously I would welcome answering any questions that you might have. And I'm going to grab a coffee.
If you'd like to have some time to think about it, I've got Amanda's going to talk to you about a plan to implement this and how do we pay for this? So if you don't mind, I'll have her give you some time to think about, maybe you can ask Rob. He's going to stick around, right, Rob?
Yeah.
All right. All right.
So as Rob says, of course, we have to figure out a way to pay for this. That's always a big part of it. So what this sheet that I just gave you shows are two different options that Jerry and I had discussed tonight, run the numbers on. I actually just finished putting this together this morning for you to make sure it was all accurate. I wanted to be sure that the numbers were as accurate as I could possibly make them before I came in here. The first one is option one, and this would be if all of the new positions that we are authorizing for next year were not started until January. Instead of starting them in July, which is typically when we add new positions, we would hold off and hire them in January. In this plan, that would take that $902,000 plan that are cost that Rob mentioned in his presentation. Right below that, we take out the 5% cost of living and planned merit raises that Jerry and I had already discussed in planning next year. Take those out, that drops that total to $561,000. Bring to minimum increases. One of the things that Jerry and I discussed that we feel very strongly about is in April, the first pay period in April, anyone who is below their minimums will be blocked from minimum as soon as we can possibly get that taken care of, which would be the March 24th payroll start date, which would be the first pay period in April. That $64,000 number right there is how much we are going to be increasing salaries for the last quarter anyways. That $64,000 will be made up in our current budgets in this fiscal year. That brings our final total down by holding off. The delayed position savings would be $301,000 if we waited until January 1st to start those. That brings that $902,000 number down to $195,134. That's the difference that we would be looking at budgetary impact in next fiscal year compared to what we would be looking at with what we would normally do anyway. The second option, the financial impact option number two, everything is the same except we delay the new positions until April 1st. So that talks that totaled down again to $55,941. We have talked to a staff extensively about this and my understanding is that all department heads are in favor of holding off hiring and adding any new positions and continuing to work with the same level of staff that they currently have to be able to bring their employee salaries up to where they are at the competitive marketplaces and to fix any compression issues that we currently have in our staff.
If there's anything else I need to add to this, there's, you know, we, I looked at, you know, with us getting, bringing up those folks that need to get to the minimum in April and then with the adjustment in July, you know, would, you know, would there be anybody that would not be getting some kind of a raise? And I think I narrowed it down to just one full-time employee and I think it was three part-time employees. So everybody will be getting something. It may, that range is going to vary, of course, depending on the market study, based on the market study, but everybody would be getting something either April or July. So I felt pretty about that. Then next year, our plan would be to adjust the whole, the whole plans for cost of living increases so they don't fall behind.
For maintaining, one of the things that Rob recommended and that Jerry and I are discussing is we are going to do a cost of living adjustment every year based on Rob's recommendations on what is typically used for that, like for your CPI, is it CPI average, something like that, in addition to merit increases. So as we do cost of living, this whole pay plan should move forward and the employees will continue to live up inside the pay plan because of their merit increases, which means our current new pay plan should not fall behind as our previous one did.
I also like to just, I know that, you know, to keep, you know, the morale high in the city, there's, there's four key areas I'll always look at and one of them is pay and benefits, obviously, and that's what we're talking about tonight is actually pay, not necessarily all the benefit package. You know, I have to make sure that they have good equipment to use when they're in the field, have to make sure that they have proper uniforms, we have to make sure we have decent facilities, there's safe facilities for them to work out of, and we have to provide training. You have to keep that in balance, so I'm trying to always balance those areas out together. It's not just, just us that we don't, we skip, we give terrible facilities, get terrible equipment, and then we give no training, that's not going to do us any good either. But it's a balance, so I just wanted to keep that in mind as I'm dealing with all these different issues.
And what was the total benefit increase that we just approved?
$10,000. It was $96,000.
Yes, $96,000, based on current, thank you. I was, based on current enrollment numbers. One of the other things that Jerry and I discussed that we will be bringing to you in May, at the same time we bring all of the legislative changes with this to you, is, excuse me, we are actually going to be creating and adding into the personnel manual how this plan will be maintained and implemented in the future so that there is no question on fairness or equality amongst the employees. It's going to be exactly detailed out how the situation will be handled and that will be brought before you guys for approval as well. That will include the specific language on the cost splitting, the merit increases, what will be required to get those merit increases, those types of things.
Yeah, I was going to ask about merit increases. Is that, what do you have to do to get the two and a half percent?
So our current plan, you had to have been employed the previous calendar year over, that's the year that you were being appraised in. You had to have completed your annual training, which includes our target solutions and any departmental training they're required to. You had to have met expectations on your most recent performance appraisal, and you had to have not been suspended or demoted for disciplinary reasons in the previous, and during the performance appraisal period.
What percentage of the employees roughly get that two and a half percent of a year?
98-plus percent. And we will probably be pulling out the target solutions piece, the training piece, because our concern is once they hit that maximum, there's no incentive for them to do their training. So I think we're going to remove that and just use traditional disciplinary options if necessary if employees don't complete training.
I mean, have we had any, put any thought into maybe having a scale where if you meet expectations, you get a certain increase if you exceed? Because otherwise you've got people that are really crushing it and they're getting the same raise as somebody that's just barely lived it long.
We've had that in the past and the issue that we ran into is that then you have department heads who grade their employees super easy to make sure that they get a really big raise. Department heads who are more fair and tougher and so a lot fewer of their employees that go exceed these expectations and they all see, it's a lot more open for disparity if we do that. And whether it's conscious or unconscious bias, it does tend to happen.
So we only leave it up to the department head to do the performance reviews? They're not reviewed by HR?
Well, I review them once they come to me. No, they are actually, I don't see their day-to-day operations. And it's not necessarily the department heads that do the appraisal. If they have a supervisor between the employee and the department head, it's their direct supervisor who does the appraisal. The department heads review them, go over them with the employee, and sign off on them. But like, I'll use public services as a perfect example. You have the public services director, but the reviews are completed by the critical yours.
And the review goes all the way up to HR reviews, and I review, and the final sign-off and all the performance appraisals every year, so I review them all too, so that's the way it works. It's really, like you said, it's really kind of hard when you have 10 different departments and they do judge and they're, you know, they're employees differently, so.
Right, that's, that's what I was getting at. The difference that our department has raised certain.
And that is one of the pitfalls that has been brought up in a lot of my training with doing like meet the expectations, exceed the expectations, and rewarding that way is it's very easy to reward bias to come into it, which is one of the reasons why Jerry and I've just done meet the expectations or done that.
That's why we do a lot of these objectives, you know, you, you know, those are pretty objective ways that we came to judge, deciding merit, you know, using the training and using the, the other aspects that she mentioned. Those are really important that we do that.
And the, the concern that we have is not so much that people are going to rate troublesome employees higher than they necessarily need to be because I've heard about typically in the appraisal period, if you have someone who's not doing what they need to be doing, I'm going to hear the department head come to me and we're going to have a conversation usually. But you might have an average employee who is ready to exceed the expectation because the department head or the appraiser doesn't necessarily want to have to tell them, well, you just barely meet minimum expectations. It's easier to just let them exceed, letting them get that five or seven and a half percent or however you look at it. That's where you start getting into that sticky situation.
So I think, you know, you look at the quality of the, of the work that they do now and I think it's pretty high. I mean, if 97, 98% of them are meeting our merits, that tells me they're high performers, they're getting the training that we needed them to get throughout that year, they're getting their jobs done out in the field, haven't been seriously disciplined, it caused them to take time off, so I, you know, our turnover rate is 10%.
Your average is around 10%.
So, I mean, I think, you know, when you tie all that together, I think we have a pretty well-performing city. Employees working for you, quality's high.
When will he have the final report for us? Within a month? Yeah.
The final report will be released before we bring in the recommendation.
So we'll have enough of a meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the board decides that they're going to make a decision on what recommendation they're moving forward with, that's kind of the last chapter I have to write, is that recommendations chapter. So it's kind of pending your, your decision.
I would like to have the, at least, portion of the
I would like to have the, at least, portion of the reports you have completed before we make the recommendation, just to look at what you put together.
Sure?
At least I would.
Now, is COLA typical?
I think as it's described, the, you know, what you're looking at doing with hardwiring and cost of living adjustments, because we know that the market moves, but the market moves at different rates. You know, when we had inflation before COVID, that was 1.8%. You know, a 3% cost of living adjustment, employees were getting ahead of market, their buying power was actually increasing, whether they received a merit or not. Then you have times where you have a high inflationary environment, like what just come through, and now it's becoming sticky at 3.1% and a cost of living adjustment that would be, you know, 3%, maybe keeps them at market. That's why we recommend a three-year rolling average is one option, where, you know, the ups and downs can be moved, can be kind of factored in, within reason. You know, one of those years, I think we had an 8.5 to 9% inflation. Even with that, I don't think the expectation should ever be that you're going to meet the market when the market has more than a 6% increase in inflation in one year. But that would be, to your point, set as a matter of policy, to where it doesn't look like the policymakers are picking winners and losers every year, you know what I mean? You've kind of said, look, this is our guidepost, this is how we're going to treat cost of living adjustments. In normal times, we're going to do a three-year rolling average and this would be the expectation. The merit piece, the high-performing organizations that we deal with, they have both. And the merit piece is handled any number of ways, but there's usually a minimum expectation. You know, what, what do I have to do as an employee regardless of the department that I'm in to meet minimum expectations? And if I meet that, then it might be 1 to 2% would be the merit increase, for example, 2%. But if I exceed that, then that's when, as you were saying, you know, a high performer could be rewarded, but it, it has to be less subjective. The only places I've seen it successful is where a department director can't play favorites and everybody's going to be recommended for the max and they're going to get 4% because they're all high performers. If that's the case, then it should be one of the most innovative departments in the public sector. Like, we should have people traveling here going, what are they doing different in the public worst department? Because everybody's talking to them, they're winning awards when they go to conferences, they're figuring out new ways to be more productive, save money, be more efficient, on and on. And there are, so there aren't cities that I work with that are that gold standard and their employees embrace that, but it's also placed on them by the board. The board will say, look, these are our desired outcomes, we're going to measure citizen satisfaction, we're going to measure the amount of time it takes to respond to a citizen, how long it takes to process affirmative, whatever it might be, and if you beat those expectations, then there's the merit. So that's, that's how we see it. Yes, COLA is kind of a given in high-performing organizations.
So the cities that were surveyed, that they are comparing ourselves to have COLA and, and their policies?
I can't answer that question, but I can tell you that we compared base salary adjusted for cost of living for them. So what they're doing maybe in law enforcement for supplemental pays or maybe what they're paying extra for on-call or what their average COLA is, that's going to vary entity to entity. But one thing we can hang our hat on is, alright, what's the base salary that they're paying? What's the foundational base salary? And that's always where we recommend our organization to get to. Pay a competitive wage first, then if you decide to offer those next level benefits, you have a competitive advantage in the marketplace. If you decide to hardwire a cost of living adjustment, you start to gain a competitive advantage in the marketplace. If your merit plan encourages high performers and rewards them, those people are going to want to come to work for you. It's those other things outside of base salary that you could introduce that helps separate you from the market.
So that's create new job titles for people to go into, get, get increases then to meet the salary ranges for the next level? Or is this just pay range is based on performance?
Well, it's pay range is based on market and some job titles were changed, recommend changes to basically modernize your pay plan and to meet HR best standards, if you will. But the initial change is based on the market response. What is the competitive pay range when we average the market together?
Right, I understand that, I'm just saying, if someone wants to move to the next level of the pay range, how do they get there? And not, not just with the merit increase or a COLA, I'm talking.
If they want to move to a different position. If they want to be promoted. So one of the things that Jerry and Brenda and Cincy became our city administrator is internal promotions, promoting internally as it all possible. And most of our high-performing employees, the majority of them have moved up into positions of more responsibility. One of the things that we're all just talking about, something's been adjusted, those were based on JAT information, the job assessment tool information, where jobs have changed over time, but the title hasn't been updated and the grade hasn't been updated. So that's one of the things that this has helped bring up to, okay, so although the job three years ago was down here at grade three, for example, now they're doing grade four or grade five work, excuse me, and so this will make that adjustment to move that position up to the correct track. And one of the other things that I'm doing that I've worked on over the last few years is making sure that in the, in the different departments, there are positions available where employees gain additional certifications or training, they are able to promote into on as we debate.
One other thing to add to that is that the job description update will address, I think, some of what you're talking about as well, all of the, that there's going to be conditions of employment for each one of the updated job descriptions. So we know if I'm a level one, what do I have to do to get to a level two?
Right, that's basically what I'm getting at. I want to make sure that people have the opportunity if they want to be able to stay with us to make more money, but.
And it'll be clearly identified what the conditions of employment are for someone to get to that next level so they can plan that career path, absolutely.
And one of the reasons why Rob recommends and the management team agree with the hyper plan is it not only rewards employees for their time in their current position, it rewards their longevity with staying with the city. So the longer you're here, the more that benefits you and it encourages you to continue to climb because you will continue to get those years of service credit at a 50% appraisal rate, even if you move up to another position. So you're not going to start back at the minimum just because you've been with the city 15 years, we're not going to start you back at the minimum in a new position necessarily.
I just want to make sure.
No, I understand that. I appreciate you.
I think it was good that we decided to add, to tell you what, what the city, so for example, if you have a patrol officer that's been here five years and they, they're going to move up to the next level of corporal position, they're not going to start at the minimum of the corporal they're going to get. How many years were you here as a patrol officer? Well, five years, that's two and a half.
Right, 50%.
So 50%, so then you add that and then you move on, so we, I, I really appreciate what Rob has done, put together a really good plan for us. You know, the way I, the budget works, I don't anticipate putting this out for some kind of a special vote for, from this board. I always implement what the pay, what our pay plan is going to be into the budgetary process and then when we actually do our, our budget, when we have our budget study session in May, that's when you all decide whether or not you're going to, you're going to, you know, make any changes to the budget that's been presented to you and then, and then you have our first reading and you have, you know, which you can still make amendments and then the second reading in June will be the final and then that's where we'll implement. One way or the other, we have to either implement some, you know, the old plan or the new plan. I really like the new plan a lot better and that's why we're proposing we could get this done if we hold off on, on some of the, first of all, I never approve all the full-time and part-time requests that the department heads want. I mean, they always want a lot of the extra void if they can, but I never can implement all of it, so in this particular year, I think I only went above with half maybe of what they, they asked for and I haven't even talked to the department heads about it yet, except for one so far, and I'm doing their performance right, appraisals right now, next week, they started one today. But, so we, we use what I thought would be six full-time and five part-time employees that we would need to add next year. We could get by and the department heads all agree that they're willing to wait and hold off on adding, and that's saved us a significant amount of money in wages and benefits for six full-time people and five part-time people. That's a significant savings, that's what we basically think, we can get to this and if, if we had to push it a little bit longer, if things were looking tight as I go through the year and watching the budget, you know, I can always say, we're going to hold off and maybe not do it in January, maybe we're going to do it in February, you know, and go from there. But that's how I think we get it paid for, so I think it's a really good, really good plan. I like the way you laid out the new grade structure for us, you know, that we're able to, especially this challenge, I've already asked the department heads, I started talking about a couple of months ago, that I, I want to make sure that anybody that's below the minimum gets there. So I need you to start tightening up your budgets and seeing where we can get some savings so that we can implement at least part of this plan in April, and I think we're there with, with the different budgets that they have, 10 different.
And the reason we're waiting until April is because it's going to take me two, three weeks to meet with all, I will be meeting with all of the employees individually to discuss their information with them, so there's no surprises for anybody and also so I have time to get all this in the system and get everything put in because this is a large undertaking administratively.
Right, to change 135.
There's 135 people that have had divisions changed.
Yeah, you know, this form, we have to have them sign a personal action form once they, they'd love to see, and I, you know, I told her to make sure that when she, you know, has her individual meeting with them, that they're going to get a raise in April, that that be completed on a personal action form and that anything that they would possibly be getting in July is, of course, is, is dependent upon a budget getting passed by this board.
So there's no expectations of that.
Yeah, that there's a guarantee that they're going to get that, that.
You're talking about the 64 right now?
Yes.
Yeah. Alderman Matthews. You mentioned earlier about the draft report and wanting to see that, and I just wanted to clear up one thing because I don't think maybe I explained what would be in the report. I didn't want you to think that we're showing you one set of numbers today and there might be a, a different set of numbers. The report that I'm talking about, it's chapters that are laid out that follow the work that we've done. So there's an initial introduction chapter, then there's an assessment of current conditions chapter. That's just where we evaluate the pay plan that was in place when we began the engagement. Then we have an outreach chapter where I share with, you know, you what I heard when I was here for outreach, what the staff's holding. Then we have a market summary chapter where basically I can dance down in a couple of slides in the interest of time, you know, what's the overall market position and what did we find there? But you wouldn't read that market chapter and be like, wow, I didn't, I didn't see that coming, you know, based on the presentation that he gave. It just maybe is a little bit more of an in-depth explanation of the overall market. And then that last chapter that we'll provide for you is a recommendations chapter. And that basically lays out exactly what we brought to you tonight. Hey, these are your current ranges, this is what we're recommending they go to, here's the implementation methodology that we're recommending, here's what is what's correct. And then the other things in the recommendations chapter really speak to some of the questions you had. How are we going to maintain this moving forward? The benefit of a COLA versus a merit, we'll provide some suggestions there. Obviously, you may choose to implement none of it or some or part of it, but it'll talk a little bit about some employee policies that you could update as well, and that's pretty much it. So just wanted to give you a better idea of, of what that draft report would look like.
And I'll be available for the budget retreat meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'll be speaking off.
Do you have data that you pulled from the other cities? Do you have any of that report data that you pulled from the other cities?
How is the data reported out from the other cities that you pulled?
Will it be in that report? And you, where is that data presented to us?
We're not supposed to share peer data, individual peer data on individual salaries. We share aggregate data, but that's, that kind of goes into some federal guideline issues on anti-collusion type legislation that, yeah, we, we don't want to get into that.
That's what we're paying them to do.
Like, it's, we'll share the, we'll share the average data or the aggregate data because we know what the, but we don't get into, you know, John Smith earns X displays or this is the, you know, these are the peers that we use to get to the recommendation type of thing. Yeah. But we will provide, there, there will be a greater level of detail than you got in this meeting, put it that way. You'll have exhibits that will lay out the different ranges for each one of your job classifications for sure. Right now, all you're seeing is an average, but one of the exhibits in the chapter will be every one of your classifications and the range, the competitive market range for it. And then it'll also show this is your current plan, your current ranges, and this is what the new ranges would be.
Perfect.
So you can see the difference.
Amanda's already been kind of working on some of that in the spreadsheet that she's going to be able to use in practicality throughout, you know, as we roll this thing out, so it's pretty impressive what she's been able to put together so far.
I stopped off across that.
Yeah.
If you're having trouble sleeping, start looking at one of those spreadsheets, you'll be right out.
I will say that his team has been amazing with spreadsheets. I just called him and I'm like, we update this and I get it within just a couple of hours, basically, but I had one that came in that had, I swear, like 27 columns and there's like 18 different tabs on it.
Divid tables and all the things.
Yeah, all the different color, everything.
So is the project over now or is this an ongoing?
This will be ongoing relationship. It will be over once everything is implemented. We still have to update job descriptions, Rob still has to complete the draft report, I still have to speak with all the individual employees, but the job description needs to be updated, you need to, I need to be officially trained and gone over myself and Sheila, our benefits specialist, on how to implement this and maintain this plan going forward. There's still a lot of work to do on the backend. This is just a meeting to let you know what the study numbers we're looking at so that you're not shocked when it comes to you in a month or so.
And I think part of what they're trying to figure out is what option we pick would determine how this implemented in her processes as well.
Alderman, so there's three main deliverables remaining, job description update, the report, and the training for ongoing maintenance of the plan. And at that point, we'd move the project closeout. But if you would like to resort us to continue to provide support services, we're absolutely lucky to have you on. Anytime, I'm game. I'd love to move in.
There's houses for sale.
Lots of them. I think if we could find a way to fund this, you know, the fact that the board is, wants this done, to review the employees now that we have it and we have the employees here, it'd be like in their face if, if we don't take a recommendation that's coming from this company.
And something that I want to say is that everything that Rob and Brenda and Daniel on his team have recommended is what Jerry and I brought to you. This was not a, we got something from Rob and then we were like, oh, let's pick this and this. This was something that all of the meetings involved with them with the entire management team and the only changes that were, were requested after the fact were changes, were errors that were in there that I discovered while looking at the numbers, people hired weren't mis-typed in or, or date them to current titles, but the recommendation was taken from Rob and his team.
This has been an integrity-built process throughout and very transparent, and that's the only way we operate. Yeah.
The only thing I've, I've still got heartburn over is the, the merit increase thing. I just, I don't know, I don't know if there's a, maybe we can talk offline.
This is something that, that part of it we're not going to bring to you guys in July.
I think there's just got to be a way to not reward everybody the same when they're not performing the same, but other than that, I'm fine with this.
Just give it what it needs, I expect.
Right. Yeah. Alright, any other discussion?
No, I think Rob done there.
Appreciate it. Alright. Hey, Prentice.
Thank you.
Thank you.